Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this June 17 meeting of the Lewis and Clark County Commissioners. We always start these little meetings out with the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, Nico.
You get demerits for being tardy. I want you to know that. Let's see, we always start these off with the introduction of participants. To my immediate left is Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Morning, Tom.
Good morning.
And to his left around the corner is Brandy Spangler, and she keeps the records and reminds us if we skip something important. To my immediate right is, what's your name again? Oh, Andy Hunthausen, Commissioner Andy Hunthausen, who's been here since, I think, when this was a federal courthouse. And to his right is Nico Hase and Keegan Shea, who are both representing the county attorney's office. And then Roger Balls is our CAO, Chief Administrative Officer. And good morning to you gentlemen. Glad you could be here with us. And then we have a sign-in sheet right up there at the front of the, on that little table, and anybody who attends this is asked to please sign it so we know if we need to, you know, call you up and ask you if you left your cellphone here or something, then we can track you down. Okay, consent action items. Mr. Balls, will you lead us in the presentation of consent action items 2A and 2B?
Yes, Chair Payne, thank you very much. Chair Payne and Commissioners, as you just stated, this is our consent action items. The first one is item 2A, Resolution 2025-37, declaring county property surplus property. Staff recommends approval of that item. The next item is 2B. It is Resolution 2025-38, declaring county property also to be surplus property, and staff recommends approval of that item as well. Those are all the consent action items for you today, Commissioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. Is there any questions from the Commission on these?
None.
Andy? Okay. In that case, is there any public comment? Seeing none. Is there... Okay, now we need a motion.
Chair Payne, I move to approve consent action items A and 2A and 2B as presented by Mr. Balls.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve these resolutions. Is there any further discussion by the Commission? Seeing none. All in favor of approving consent action items 2A and 2B as presented by Roger Balls, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. These consent items are both, they're passed. We accepted them. We're gonna do it. Next on our agenda, action item 3A, subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office and the City of Helena, and it will be presented by our friend Sherri Martin. Go for it. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Payne, Commissioner Rolfe, Commissioner Hunthausen. For the record, I am Sherri Martin, Senior Financial Coordinator for the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office. Today, I'm here to ask the Commissioners to consider the subrecipient agreement written with the City of Helena for the funding of their Edward Burns Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Our subrecipient amount is $11,574. The agreement begins upon approval by all parties through September 30, 2027. This subrecipient agreement presented before you today sets out in detail terms of the grant agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the City of Helena.
And is that all?
That's all. Easy peasy.
Well, but you could say, and we recommend that you approve something. Sorry, you don't come in here very often, so I get, you know, tease you a little bit. Okay, let's, we have any questions from this Commission regarding this?
None.
None?
Chair Payne.
Andy?
Sherri, not a question necessarily, but I guess a concurrence. This is a longstanding relationship, a longstanding grant, longstanding partnership as part of the Missouri River Drug Task Force, and so this is not necessarily a new item. It gets renewed, and this is a new grant, but it is a longstanding thing. It's not out of the ordinary, I guess. I just want to put that on the record.
Correct. In March, you, the Commission approved an interlocal agreement, but the City has asked that we do this other agreement because it shows in detail what we are required to do, what they are required to do. It's a new form that they ask us to have signed.
Right. Thank you, Chair Payne.
And in reviewing this document, I am looking down at one of the attachments, and son of a gun.
There it is.
I signed this, 3/20/25. I thought it seemed familiar. Okay, well, thank you, Andy, for giving us a little more understanding of what we're getting into here. Is there any other questions or comments from the Commission? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I think we need a motion here.
Chair Payne, I would make a motion to approve the subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office and the City of Helena as presented.
Second.
Is there any, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office and the City of Helena. Is there any further comments by the Commission?
Just to comment that this is an important part of law enforcement in our area. This group has been involved in some substantial breaking up some rings for selling drugs in the area, and I appreciate what they're doing.
Okay. Any further? Seeing none. It's been moved and seconded. I think I already said that. Okay, okay, we should have a vote. All those in favor of approving the subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office and the City of Helena as presented by Sherri Martin indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Oh, you're Sarah. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the grant application to the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services, originally to be presented by Sarah Sandow, but now we have her stand in. Come forward and state your name for the record.
Chair Payne, members of the Commission, with apologies. Sarah, good to be here this morning. I'm Fred Sargason, the new operations manager at Lewis and Clark County Public Health. The Commission will consider the grant application to the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services for their House Bill 118 Suicide Prevention Funding, up to the amount of $100,000 to cover the Safer Communities Montana and Lost Team Suicide Prevention Work. The grant period begins July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. Lewis and Clark County, Lewis and Clark Public Health has received this funding for the past four years to fund the local outreach to suicide survivors, which is the lost program, and Safer Community Montana, or SEM, programs. Suicide is a complex issue that requires a multifaceted approach to reach different groups at different stages in their lives. On average, 20 people die by suicide annually in the county. The Lost Team is a suicide prevention model where a licensed professional and a suicide-loss survivor engage people who have recently lost someone to suicide to provide support and connect to resources. The Lost Team offers survivor-to-survivor support, an installation of hope, local resources they can access, a bag filled with helpful materials, and grief activity books for any children present with the follow-up to ensure the survivors have what they need. The Lost Team responds to 100% of calls or reports from the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office Coroner's Division through delayed or unseen response. This funding covers supplies, marketing, training, and resources for the volunteers and the survivors. This grant would also cover part of our Safer Communities Montana work. Since 2019, the working group Safer Communities Montana efforts have centered on preventing suicides by intentional overdose and firearms. Through outreach, SEM leverages potential partners, identifies points of intervention, and provides customizable materials for Montanans to easily adopt and implement safe storage and lethal means. The group provides resource material, posters, literature displays, gun locks, and Datura Drug Deactivation Kits as part of the program. The funding covers supplies, printing costs, marketing, training, and resources. Staff recommends approval. And I will be here to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you. One of my questions is oftentimes when we approve these things, there's a signature page for something to show, and I'm not seeing it on this one. Andy, I'm sure the man with history knows what...
Okay. I do. These are DocuSign grants and transactions, I believe.
Go ahead.
I'm pretty sure that that's how we've been working with the Department of Health and Human Services for a while, so.
Chair Payne, members of the Commission, that sounds familiar. I am fairly new to this process, and I will just double-check when I get back, and if there should have been a different process, I will contact the Commission and let you know.
Okay.
Well, and actually, Chair Payne, this being a grant application, it probably does not have a signature page. We just have to prove the grant, that we're supporting the grant application, so it's not receiving a grant at this time. It's a grant application.
We're just applying therefore.
The Commission to apply for the money. Yep, so, sorry about that.
You know, we really need your old gray hair around here, Andy, because, would you agree with his?
Yes.
Okay, then let's move along.
I just, if I...
Fred, go ahead.
If I might just make a comment. The work that you do with family members, friends, of folks that take their life by, take their own life, I think is remarkable, and it's important. Sometimes those folks are highly susceptible to self-doubt and need that and need to talk about it. So, thank you for what the Health Department is doing in that regard. I think it's a very important endeavor.
And Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolfe, I appreciate that acknowledgement. I'm, as you know, I'm fairly new to the department, and I'm, on a daily basis, amazed at the work that they do, and this is one of the programs that sort of touched my family specifically. So, I'm very much appreciative as well of the work that they're doing.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Well, let's, oh, I have to ask for a public comment. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, and we have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the grant application to the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services as explained by Fred.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this grant application as presented by Fred Salverson. Is there any further discussion from the Commission? Seeing none. All in favor of approving the grant application as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you, Fred. Tell Sarah we missed her. Next up is a bid opening by Mr. Dan Carlin. Agenda item 3C, chip seal.
Chair Payne. A bid award.
Bid award, I'm sorry. Good thing he keeps me in line. It was a test, Andy. That's what it was.
Thank you.
It was just a test to make sure you were paying attention.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. For the record, Dan Carlin, County Engineer. And we're talking about the 2025 Chip Seal Notice of Award. On June 3 of 2025, three bids were opened for the 2025 Chip Seal Project. The project generally consists of chip seal surfacing, fog sealing, and epoxy paint striping on various county roads and rural improvement districts, or RIDs, in Lewis and Clark County. Funding for this project is from the Road Infrastructure Budget for all bid items except items 3, 5, and 8, which are budgeted through individual RID funds and included in an overall project summary sheet approved by the Commission as part of the annual Public Works budget. After review of bids, staff recommends awarding the contract to the low bidder, Bullock Contracting LLC of Boulder, Montana, for a total unit price bid amount of $277,351.90, and authorize the Chair to sign all applicable contract documents, and I can answer questions you may have.
Does the Commission have any questions? Andy? All right, then, how about public comment? Kind of quiet in here today. No public comment, so then let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move that we award the 2025 Chip Seal Bid Award to Bullock Contracting as presented by Mr. Carlin.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the bid award for the 2025 Chip Seal as presented by County Engineer Dan Carlin. Is there any further discussion by the Commission? Seeing none. All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to action item 3D, contract between Lewis and Clark County and TD&amp;H Engineering. Go for it, Dan.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. Again, for the record, Dan Carlin. In January, Public Works solicited statements of qualifications from engineering firms to provide road-on-call services to roster-qualified firms in three road-related categories. Based on the screening, scoring results, five general, three geotechnical, and three traffic services firms were selected for the roster. TD&amp;H Engineering was one of the five selected to enter into an on-call contract for general, and also one of the three selected for geotechnical services. Before you this morning is a five-year contract with TD&amp;H Engineering for on-call road, general, and geotechnical engineering services. The contract requires the consultant to submit a task order for each task the county requests TD&amp;H to accomplish. The task order will include the scope of work, a detailed outline of key elements, a schedule for completion, and a cost breakdown. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the contract with TD&amp;H Engineering for on-call road services and authorize the Chair to sign, and I can answer questions you may have.
Andy?
Chair Payne, Mr. Carlin, we have a series, you just described, there's going to be several contracts that we do here. Just for the public's benefit, why we do that, why we establish this roster, and how we use that, and how it makes our work more efficient and effective as we go forward. Thank you.
Absolutely. Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunthausen, so, state procurement requires that professional services, specifically engineering architects and surveyors, are procured based on qualifications. So we send out an advertisement and solicit their statement of qualifications, which goes through their professional credentials and things of that nature, their past work performance, past work history. There's, I believe, five criteria that are required for us to evaluate. So we, again, we solicit that, and then we have a panel of five generally people evaluate those statements of qualifications based on a set of criteria that is outlined in that request, and then we rank them. And many times, we do interviews with a set number of firms based on that, and in the end, we have a list that we create, a roster, for the categories that we've selected. In this case, general, which is like geometric design, layout of roads, things of that nature. Geotechnical, which is the earth, the ground, it's very important that we know what we're building a road upon before we actually spend money to put asphalt or good gravel down. And then traffic services, which is looking at traffic patterns, vehicle counts, a whole host of things, intersection analysis. They're all within civil engineering and road design, but they're also somewhat specialized, those other two categories. So, the reason we have a roster is many firms have a backlog and a workload. We don't want to put all our eggs in one basket, so to speak, so we have the opportunity to spread the work around in order to be more efficient with time and more specialties. Some firms show a little stronger in, say, their geometric design, or some might be a little stronger in culvert work, things of that nature, drainage. So we have, they've all got their, kind of their avenue that they're real good at, some are great at everything. So we'd like to keep the roster a little longer on the general, so we have five firms selected for that, and then the others are a little more specialized with less volume of work, so we have that as a three-firm roster for those two. Hopefully, I answered that for you.
Great, you did. So just one more, Mr. Payne.
Andy?
So, after this roster is established, then something comes up, a project that we've been planning for a long time, or might be even something that, you know, Mother Nature gives us that we have to respond to. You have this roster of people that are organizations that, like you said, might have a specialty or maybe general and good at everything, but we can draw from that roster that's already established, saying, geez, we need to respond now, are you available? This bridge needs repair, or design, or whatever it might be. So, that's another reason for having this kind of group ready to go. Is that correct?
Yes. Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunthausen, so yes, it does allow us, through our procurement process, to be a little more nimble, because they've already been selected through the appropriate process.
Right.
So then we can issue what we call a task order, that's a brief, short scope, and cost, and schedule, to where we can get that turned around much quicker. In addition, this Commission, or sorry, a prior Commission has passed a resolution granting the Public Works Director the authority to sign contracts under $25,000. So on these smaller items, Director Chambers is able to sign that and get these folks moving much quicker. So especially in an emergency situation where we have, say, flooding, or a road closed, or a fire, or something of that nature where we need to get them moving the next day, that's something that can actually happen.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Chair Payne.
And thank you, Andy. Actually, that takes care of some of my concerns. Tom, do you have anything?
No, I just, I just really appreciate the, having that, the way you approached this, so that you do have that ability to move a little faster when there is a need, so, well done.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, there's one other thing I would like to add here. So this establishes this roster and these master contracts for five years, and these are excellent for the smaller projects. I do want to point out that if it's a larger design project, say we get the funding to rebuild Country Club Road, those types of projects would be advertised and run through the full process. Just out there for the public to hear that, so.
Is that, so those type, are those the ones over 25,000?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, it would generally be more than that even. We don't put a cap specifically in the contract, but for these task orders, we try to keep it at 50,000 or less. If it's between 50,000 and 25,000, they come before the Commission for approval. Anything below the 25,000 would be for Director Chambers.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Is there any, let's see, we've already answered the Commission. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and TD&amp;H Engineering as explained by Dan Carlin.
Second.
Does the Commission have any further comment on this matter? Seeing none. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and TD&amp;H Engineering as presented by County Engineer Dan Carlin. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Next item on our agenda, item Agenda 3E, contract between Lewis and Clark County and Pioneer Technical Services, and this will be again presented by Dan Carlin. Go for it, Dan.
Good morning again, Chair Payne, Commissioners. For the record, Dan Carlin. In January, Public Works solicited statements of qualifications from engineering firms to provide road-on-call services to roster-qualified firms in three road-related categories. Based on the scoring results, five general, three geotechnical, and three traffic services firms were selected for the roster. Pioneer Technical Services was one of the three selected to enter into an on-call contract for geotechnical services. Before you this morning is a five-year contract with Pioneer Technical Services for on-call road, geotechnical engineering services. The contract requires the consultant to submit a task order for each task the county requests Pioneer to accomplish. The task order will include the scope of work, a detailed outline of key elements, a schedule of completion, and a cost breakdown. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the contract with Pioneer Technical Services for on-call road services and authorize the Chair to sign. I can answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions from the Commission?
No.
And this actually will be, if someone is curious as to how this works, they can look at the answer, the responses you gave to Commissioner Hunthausen's question earlier on how this all works, so. Let's see, did I ask for a public comment? We can always do more than public comments. Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing none. I think we need a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Pioneer Technical Services as presented.
Second.
Second.
Sorry about that.
Way up. Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Pioneer Technical Services as presented by Dan Carlin. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Contract, this, this contract is approved unanimously. The next agenda item is the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Staley Engineering and Associates Incorporated, again, as presented by Dan Carlin. Go for it, Dan.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. Dan Carlin, for the record. In January, Public Works solicited statements of qualifications from engineering firms to provide on-call services to roster-qualified firms in three road-related categories. Based on the scoring results, five general, three geotechnical, and three traffic service firms were selected for the roster. Staley Engineering and Associates Incorporated was one of the five selected to enter into an on-call contract for general services. Before you this morning is a five-year contract with Staley Engineering and Associates, Inc., for on-call road, general engineering services. The contract requires the consultant to submit a task order for each task the county requests Staley to accomplish. Task order will include the scope of work, a detailed outline of key elements, a schedule for completion, and a cost breakdown. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the contract with Staley Engineering and Associates Incorporated for on-call road services and authorize the Chair to sign.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions from the Commission?
None here.
Is there any, any public comment? Seeing no public... Seeing no public comment, we should have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Staley Engineering and Associates Incorporated as explained by Dan Carlin.
Second.
Does the Commissioner have any other, does the Commission have any other questions or comments?
Not.
Seeing none. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the road-on-call engineering, general services contract with Staley Engineering and Associates Incorporated as explained by Dan Carlin. All those in favor of this motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, same sign. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dan. And. Have to keep track of which ones I've gotten signed, and I don't want to sign them before we approve them. Okay, next, contract between Lewis and Clark County and Sandbell. Go for it, Dan.
Good morning, Chair Payne Commissioners. Dan Carlin for the record. In January, Public Works solicited statements of qualifications from engineering firms to provide road on-call services to roster-qualified firms in three road-related categories. Based on the scoring results, five general, three geotechnical, and three traffic services firms were selected for the roster. Sandbell was one of the five selected to enter into an on-call contract for general and also one of the three selected for traffic services. Before you this morning is a five-year contract with Sandbell for on-call road, general, and traffic engineering services. The contract requires the consultant to submit a task order for each task the county requests Sandbell to accomplish. The task order will include the scope of work, a detailed outline of key elements, a schedule for completion, and a cost breakdown. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the contract with Sandbell for on-call road services and authorize the Chair to sign.
Thank you, Dan. Does the Commission have any questions for Dan?
None here.
Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. We need a motion to approve item 3G, contract between Lewis and Clark County and Sandbell.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Sandbell, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Boy, we are moving right along, aren't we, Dan? Okay. The next item on our agenda is item 3H, contract between Lewis and Clark County and Abilene Traffic Services Incorporated, and Dan Carlin will explain how this all comes together. Thank you, Dan.
Good morning, Chair Payne Commissioners. For the record, Dan Carlin. In January, Public Works solicited statements of qualifications from engineering firms to provide road on-call services to roster-qualified firms in three road-related categories. Based on the scoring results, five general, three geotechnical, and three traffic services firms were selected for the roster. Abilene Traffic Services, or ATS, was one of the three selected to enter into an on-call contract for traffic services. Before you this morning is a five-year contract with ATS for on-call road, traffic, engineering services. The contract requires the consultant to submit a task order for each task the county requests ATS to accomplish. The task order will include the scope of work, a detailed outline of key elements, a schedule for completion, and a cost breakdown. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the contract with Abilene Traffic Services for on-call road services and authorize the Chair to sign.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions from the Commission? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. It's, we have a motion to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Abilene Traffic Services Incorporated as presented by Dan Carlin.
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve this contract. All in favor of the contract, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We're getting to the bottom of the pile here, Dan, so you just go right ahead. Item 3I.
Good morning, Chair Payne Commissioners. Again for the record, Dan Carlin. In January, Public Works solicited statements of qualifications from engineering firms to provide road on-call services to roster-qualified firms in three road-related categories. Based on the scoring results, five general, three geotechnical, and three traffic services firms were selected for the roster. TripleTree Engineering Incorporated was one of the five selected to enter into an on-call contract for general services. Before you this morning is a five-year contract with TripleTree Engineering Incorporated for on-call road, general, engineering services. The contract requires the consultant to submit a task order for each task the county requests TripleTree to accomplish. The task order will include the scope of work, a detailed outline of key elements, a schedule for completion, and a cost breakdown. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the contract with TripleTree Engineering Incorporated for on-call road services and authorize the Chair to sign.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions from the Commission?
None here.
Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. I guess, let's, let's have a motion on this.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and TripleTree Engineering, Inc., as presented. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this contract. Is there any further comments from the Commission? Seeing none. All in favor of approving this contract signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. This motion passes unanimously. Item 3J, contract between Lewis and Clark County and Great West Engineering Incorporated as presented by Dan Carlin. Stand.
Good morning, Chair Payne Commissioners. Again for the record, Dan Carlin. In January, Public Works solicited statements of qualifications from engineering firms to provide road on-call services to roster-qualified firms in three road-related categories. Based on the scoring results, five general, three geotechnical, and three traffic services firms were selected for the roster. Great West Engineering Incorporated was one of the five selected to enter into an on-call contract for general services. Before you this morning is a five-year contract with Great West Engineering Incorporated for on-call road, general, engineering services. The contract requires the consultant to submit a task order for each task the county requests Great West to accomplish. The task order will include the scope of work, a detailed outline of key elements, a schedule for completion, and a cost breakdown. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the contract with Great West Engineering Incorporated for on-call road services and authorize the Chair to sign.
Thank you, Dan. Any comments from the Commission? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Can we have a motion, please?
Chair Payne, I move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Great West Engineering Incorporated as explained by Dan Carlin.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the contract with Great Western Engineering Incorporated as presented by Dan Carlin. Is there any further comment from the Commission? All in favor of approving this contract signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. This motion passes unanimously. This contract is approved. Okay. Is this the last one?
Chair Payne Commissioners, this is the last one today.
Today? Well, of course, I meant today. In that case, I think that we should ask you to recite this without looking at your notes. You've had plenty of time to practice. Oh, never mind. Dan, would you explain item 3G, or 3K for this Commission?
Chair Payne Commissioners, again for the record, Dan Carlin. In January, Public Works solicited statements of qualifications from engineering firms to provide road on-call services to roster-qualified firms in three road-related categories. Based on the scoring results, five general, three geotechnical, and three traffic services firms were selected for the roster. Dowell was one of the three selected to enter into an on-call contract for geotechnical services. Before you this morning is a five-year contract with Dowell for on-call road, geotechnical, engineering services. The contract requires the consultant to submit a task order for each task the county requests Dowell to accomplish. Task order will include the scope of work, a detailed outline of key elements, a schedule for completion, and a cost breakdown. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the contract with Dowell for on-call road services and authorize the Chair to sign, and I can answer any questions that might be lingering.
Thank you. I have a question. Did Dowell used to have a different name, or, I mean, that, was it Dowell Engineering or something in that order?
Chair Payne Commissioners, that's a good question.
I don't know.
That firm has been through a few different mergers. At one point, they were HKM, and then they merged with a firm from Alaska called Dowell, and then they became Dowell HKM, and then fairly recently, they dropped the HKM portion off of that.
Okay. Okay, it was just curiosity at some of these, some of these companies we've dealt with time after time, and I recognize those, but this one was not on my list. Okay, does the Commission have any more questions for Dan Carlin on this or any other issue? Seeing none? Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment? Let's have a motion, whether, should we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Dowell?
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Dowell as presented. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any further comment for the Commission? Seeing none? Let's have a vote. All those that want to approve this contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. There, good job, guys. All right, we have come to the portion of this meeting where we ask for public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of this Commission that is not on the agenda above. Seeing none? This meeting is adjourned.